Here.
Here.
So, are you sure?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Dersinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Callens?
Yes.
Mr. Plummer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Number two is advertised for bids to eat truckin' cream.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to advertise for replacement cream. Are there questions or comments? Alan.
When you did that, you didn't write it specific for any one kind of brand or in there anywhere? I knew the name, but I didn't get the title up. So, I mean, it's like an aspirin or?
It's more like a, excuse me, Mark guys and Mark Director wastewater. It's more of an off-road crane so we can be on our cells and be able to work on our aeration systems. We're looking at a used one, so I didn't want to specify a specific brand because we're looking at different varieties and then to be with finance, obviously, and find the best way to go after a used machine.
What's going to happen to that beauty that you got? Where did you get that one?
Actually, I was told that was given to us for a dollar and sent to.
Jut.
I think we got a money's worth out of that one.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Dersinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Callens?
Yes.
Mr. Plummer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Number two is advertised for bids to eat truckin' cream.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to advertise for replacement cream. Are there questions or comments? Alan.
When you did that, you didn't write it specific for any one kind of brand or in there anywhere? I knew the name, but I didn't get the title up. So, I mean, it's like an aspirin or?
It's more like a, excuse me, Mark guys and Mark Director wastewater. It's more of an off-road crane so we can be on our cells and be able to work on our aeration systems. We're looking at a used one, so I didn't want to specify a specific brand because we're looking at different varieties and then to be with finance, obviously, and find the best way to go after a used machine.
What's going to happen to that beauty that you got? Where did you get that one?
Actually, I was told that was given to us for a dollar and sent to.
Jut.
I think we got a money's worth out of that one.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Dersinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Callens?
Yes.
Mr. Plummer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jager?
Yes. The next item is our informational items of the month, the operations report. Are there any questions or comments on those? Jim?
Just on the operations and the prices of grain this year, I wonder, are most of our harvesting done? How are we doing? I mean, that's a huge part of our income.
Yes, harvesting is done. We actually finished up earlier this year. The corn was sold for silage due to the drought of the residents around us, the farmers around us. It was our most profitable year for corn since seventy-two, actually, based on the production that we generate and the, and actually, we actually do less acres now than we did before because it used to, the old facility used to be all corn, but now we use corn, soybean, alfalfa. And in corn alone, we made more revenue this year than we have in the last forty years in our operations.
And knowing that it went for silage, I kind of knew that. The drying system we have, it'll be kind of dormant this year. We dry soybeans.
We do have seven contracts, which is roughly thirty-five thousand bushels of soybeans that we're holding on to. We're actually rolling them over, just talking about they're rolling them over to January and pricing. And usually, the market comes up in January and we will sell those soybeans, but right now, we're in storage.
Okay, thank you. How many cuttings?
Usually, we get four, most of them got five, and there were a couple looking for six.
Good year. Alan?
It says here, you took in an extra eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, most of it probably due to the crops. Where does that money go? I mean, into your fund to help pay expenses out there or?
Right. That revenue is part of our shared revenue with flow coming into the system.
So, it helps to keep the rates. Yeah, Mark, along the line where Chairman Dersinsky was going, with us not using the
dryer because of how we usually do corn, drying our own corn, is our dryer made available for private, under private contract for anybody else around the community? Is there a need for that?
It's already, Melissa's harvest already, there could be, and we do have availability. We did store some last year for a grain center that was full and they asked us to store corn, so we had been doing it in the past. We usually just wait for requests, but it's something we could actually go out and see if there's a need.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
There's kind of a scarcity this year, though, isn't there, right? The dry weather.
There was a lot of corn that was harvested high up the silage this year due to the drought.
A lot of it went into silage, but everything that's standing right now is being done, you know, picking, and that needs to go someplace. Their biggest problem has been now that it's stopped raining once in a while, so they get it on the ground.
What's the moisture they're trying to get it down to? Or is it seven percent?
Six or seven percent before they pick.
Yeah. It's not there yet.
Now, the whole list of those.
Mark, I see the soybeans have had quite a number of cuttings and it's been very productive this year. Do you store those or do you send them to market?
The soybeans, we can actually store those as well. We have the silage grain bins out there, really, what they're called, and we can store corn in our soybeans. Since the corn was all sold for silage, Commissioner Dersinsky, that we actually have room available to store corn from somebody else and maybe make a little revenue off of that, which we've done in the past, but usually, they come to us, but it's something we can actually run.
You know, Mark, not too long ago, you were buying seed, and we practiced with seed, and our profit seems to be well, and I'm sure a lot of that has to do with the way you do your seeds.
Yes, it does.
I mean, they follow hand in hand. This is the other end of that, and back before, you know, there was some questions, why you do it that way and?
Exactly. We were waiting in the bidding process of how we do seed, because we want to get the best seed production out there, so we plant it, we plant it in spring, the best seed that produces the highest number of bushel per acre. In turn, we buy that for the following year. And again, like you said, by doing that, it is the best production over twenty-seven-hundred acres of corn, so it's worth doing it that way.
What was our average on soybean bushel? It doesn't matter. I was hearing people getting ten per acre of soybean, ten bushel an acre.
You get a lot greater.
Yeah, but that's.
Seven, yeah. You're right, the drought has hurt it.
Any other questions on the informational items? If not, we'll go to whole business. Is there a whole business company that's for you, John? Well, I made a motion back in the minutes that we just approved to have a discussion and a meeting with an open discussion, and I wondered if that meeting has been set. It's only set, so if you want to set that date, then we should set the date.
The date? I'm sure if we could, John, do I feel some urgency to do that as soon as possible or a fear to delay it after the first of January? Should we get that rolling with this? Something brings us up.
My thought is that it's worthwhile having an open discussion, and that's what I'm interested in trying to get done. And for that reason, I think we need to set the meeting. I don't know what the schedule is. As far as the whole thing is concerned, I would just, I'd suggest that following the next regular scheduled DPW meeting, we have an open discussion involving the question that I raised in those minutes. That would be? Figure out.
Thirteenth? Could we possibly do it prior to the December thirteenth meeting, like we would do a planning session?
Well, I think John wants a, I'm not over it, but he wants a meeting with the public. Am I correct? Yes, I'm looking at a meeting with the public, a meeting with the municipal officials from the municipalities, townships, cities, yips, just in general, on how to approach the DPW, the Board of Public Works.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add to what John's talking about. I think it's important not to confuse the issues with this discussion over the responsibility and the right and the requirements of the new board having to actually make those decisions. We're not taking that into effect at all. I'd have to echo with John, I think it's probably to the advantage of both the new coming commissioners as well as the outgoing commissioners to have a time to comment on this and what their concerns are, and I think it might be a bit of a, a bit longer meeting than what we would add, and adding it to December's meeting may be complicating other issues that are on there, and I would like to suggest that we try and do it on its own merit and schedule that meeting and get invitations out and allow the local units to participate in that discussion. I've never intended since day one to try and find a way to find out what that board should be, who should be on it, or whatever it is, just a meaningful discussion so that both the outgoing and the new coming commissioners can take a look at all of the elements that are concerned about what the business of the Public Works Board is and how we relate to our other communities and the constituents that we serve.
But that's different than changing the Public Works Board. The Public Works Board is a decision of the board, of the county board. It's not a decision of the Public Works Board. We are a division of the county board.
I don't believe anybody's arguing that part, especially me. I'm not arguing that point.
I guess I don't understand, but where are you?
Well, I think it's been blown into, we're going to change the board. I just want to get myself educated as to how this board should operate a little more. Times have changed since this board has been created and how it comes out or ought to change it.
Well, that's.
Let's look, let's look at our options. I mean, let's get outside the box.
I think that this is a result of the question that was asked at the last meeting, and I think it's more or less, to me, like an exploratory move to sit here to talk about who needs to be brought to the table if they're not here at the table, but how do you invite them? Do you invite the mayors and the council or do you, the townships? Who are you going to invite to discuss it, to just have a general conversation of where you're going with this?
You did that on fracking, and look how crazy it got. It was for our enlightenment, you know, more than anything else, and I think that's important.
Well, it boils down in my mind to who are the participants in what we do as a Board of Public Works, which is water, sewer, and those types of things, and it seems to me that those are all things that are supported by the municipalities, by all the people who participate in this county, and I think that we ought to have an open discussion as to what, if any, input they should have in the operation of the entities that are operated by the DPW. That's what I, that's what I'm interested in.
More than water and sewer, John.
Well, I understand, I'm just, those are the major items.
Yeah, it's parks, it's huge, a lot, and most of that is in my community.
Communities.
Not the water.
But again, what I'm trying to do is, Dave Keefe knows because he sat in on shared services, there are, the municipalities and townships in some instances are coming together with respect to shared services in an attempt to cooperate, and I think that that's all I'm interested in doing is to try to explore, and I think it's a worthwhile enterprise. I think it's something that the county should do, and I think it's something that the county should lead. I'm not saying that we're going to change anything. I think we need to, and change, change at this level. We all know how long it takes if we're going to change anything anyway. It's not something that's going to happen at an open meeting, but at least it's going to give some food for thought so that some, maybe some initiative can come from this.
I was, it was twenty-nine, it could probably be a good day to have it, and we have a jail and juvenile transition center, but I'm sure we could, if you could pick a day where there's nothing and maybe have a conference center over the lights or something and then send out and invite everybody, it could give you some time, because I think you're going to have to, you know, at least the afternoon or something to.
I think you need to decide what you're doing.
I agree with you, but I'm just saying, pick a day, you can sit here and argue that all along.
Marvin, I think as chairman, I see your frustration is, how do we create an agenda? Because we don't have an end result, and usually, you know, we're used to working with that. What is our goal in this meeting and how is it going to function?
That's the basic thing. If you're going to call a meeting.
Is that where I'm seeing your frustration or?
No, my frustration is that.
Even like it is.
Patient, is that the right word? Maybe it's not the right word. The county board makes a decision on, there are set numbers, who's going to be in the Public Works Board. I mean, set by law, it's a legal thing, all right? What has been done for the last couple hundred years is that the ruling party, whoever is designated by that party, then has an agenda that he brings forth, which is voted on by the group, by the county board, on who should be there. What's being asked here is, we want to do something different, and it's fine to have a meeting to talk about what's different. The county, the Public Works Board is set by the chairman of the county board. Then the Public Works Board elects.
I'm familiar with it. I've been around and on this board for ten years, and I think what you said is, we're going to do something. I forget just how you said.
If you want to.
I mean.
What are your objectives?
Think outside the box.
I don't think that there has been an objective establishment, because you don't really know what you want to talk about, but what I think, we've got to bring, if we want to discuss because we've heard about the negatives, comments, we heard about the water and all that, we just want to discuss services, but don't tie it to anything, because if you tie it to anything, people will make up their minds, and please don't put it with, mention the jail anywhere.
Well, that's a wrong point. I mean, we have got to discuss, I've been around forty years and we've been discussing water issues. We've had a, in my earth, and maybe it's the wrong words, an impasse over water for the last thirty of that. We have three large communities who have done something to break that impasse, well within their rights, well within their study. I mean, if you want to have a thing to thank them, that's fine. If not, they're doing things within their orders. I mean, we all have responsibilities that we have within our position, whether it's President of the United States or whatever. You can only do what you're allowed to do, and if you go into a situation without having a positive outcome, Jim suggested that with the fracking. We brought in the experts on fracking. We put in the people that enforce the law, and we still had virtually a riot here because there's so many divergent views. If you go into a meeting and say, let's all be happy, the way the public is right now, you will have a lot of discussion, and I don't, I can sit here, I don't care, but you're not, unless you're trying to gain something, you need an objective.
I just thought it was supposed to be gather information on how the municipality, because Dave, it started out because of their, the perception of the Public Works Board, so you do it and gather information from those municipalities, saying, what is the problem? Is there a problem with the way the Public Works Board? And then maybe you can address it from there. I just thought it was for gather information, that's all.
Well, we are, with the one exception with the city, which may be solved shortly. We have less problems between the municipalities and the central government than we've had since I've been here ten years. But anyway, I'm sorry. It's not, do it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I guess, clarify, because I was the one starting this mess, and I'll take full credit for starting it, and I believe it's going exactly where I think it should have gone if we had this meeting. My suggestions centered around Section Two of the Public Works Act. Section Two says exactly right, Mark, that the county board, not the county board chair, the county board picks the Public Works Board, and the member shall be, A, comprised of, A, the drain commissioner, that's me, B, the second thing, the rest of the five, seven, or nine-member board may be comprised of county commissioners. It doesn't say shall be, it doesn't say must be, and then there's very little reference to the county commissioners throughout the rest of that. The implications that this act does is that there is some ownership on this board to those particular infrastructure items that we're dealing with. We don't deal, this Public Works Board, even though we deal with the Public Works Department, John does buildings, we don't have anything to do with those expenditures. That's at the full board level, that's not here. I believe the same thing goes for parks, it's not an enterprise fund, but what we do is solid waste, water, and wastewater. There are some other elements within the act that we can get involved in situations, and that's not what we're, what I'm really aiming at. What I'm aiming at is, I said it pretty clear in the last meeting, is, is I would like to discuss the possibility, just the possibility, that the county of Muskegon, through its full board, consider making this Public Works Board look more like its community than what it does right now. That's just a discussion, that's just an element that's on the table. We talked about the discussion between ourselves, we're not going to make any recommendations to the full board, we're not making any recommendations to the new board coming on. It's just to have the meaningful discussion, and it was also talked about that if we did have that discussion, that we should probably open up the floor and get some comments from the local units, whether they thought we're heading in the right direction, off base, or everything's fine the way it is. It makes no difference to me what the outcome is, I think I go along with Commissioner Snyder is that having this discussion is healthy.
Have you picked a date? Is there a date that could set this for?
If this is, if we're even thinking it might be a policy train, shouldn't we bring this up before the full board, not this board? I mean, that would remind us that we're discussing policy, especially with personnel. This board shouldn't set a date, the other board should set a date.
Commissioner Jager, you can bring anything you want up in front of the full board. I don't sit on that board, I sit on this one. I brought it up to this board just to have the discussion.
Set the date. If I may, are you uncomfortable chairing it?
No, 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 no.
Would Dave want to chair that? I mean.
I don't wish to chair the meeting, I'm just, remember, like you are, I'm only, I'm only adamantly supportive of having that discussion.
Our next, our next Public Works is the thirteenth of December. Couldn't we do it like we do some of our planning sessions previous to that meeting?
Whatever you guys wanted to.
I have an issue with the thirteenth. I would, I would, I'd like to see it happen on a day when we don't have any other board meetings. Let's look at the twenty-ninth of November, that would be fine with me. Should already have one hanging, especially in Eagles.
We already do. Can somebody state?
Wait, just a minute, we have a jail planning.
Yeah, it's going to.
We have jail planning on the twenty-ninth, so that's not a date.
That's going to be a pretty big meeting.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a date.
Are they going to stick to that date, though?
Yeah, they are.
Because it's moved, this is the third time they've changed it, that's.
Well, they haven't changed it, they've just been getting information, it's been taking them longer than what they, with all the different options, but yeah, the twenty-ninth is set in stone. We're going to bring them.
Let me, let me start with this. We recently did a port advisory committee, and who, the original committee was created in what manner?
It was appointed, the original committee was up at the strategic planning, and there were three committees, and so the county board chair appointed who would be on those committees from department directors, elected officials, court administrators, and county board of commissioners. That's how those were formed.
Okay, so it wasn't actually an act, it wasn't an act of the board of commissioners?
No.
I guess that's kind of what I'm looking at here, is this, is, you know, that's a device by which we could, we now have an advisory committee.
But we had one on water and sewer, John.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Who makes up that committee?
I believe you're on the, on the water board, there are commissioners and private citizens?
There's a partial.
Advisory part of that.
It is not, it's not a full water board.
It is more of everybody dealing with the county.
But, well, no, that's not true.
I mean, if you wanted to expand that, certainly, go ahead.
Well, I guess that's, you could do that, or you could just have, you could have another, you could just have the discussion and decide whether you want to form another committee out of a strategic planning session.
I think, in reference to the other boards, number one, you have the municipal users, which was created by the courts.
And we have contracts and everything.
And we have contracts that are twenty years long that support that, and those are all members countywide of wastewater. On the water issue, John's correct, it just involves five townships, and again, that's created under contract between the Board of Public Works and those local units, and it deals specifically with those, and that's not an advisory board. We're at, we serve at their race and whatever their direction is, and we're just a funding agency on that particular element. But solid waste, and I know we've had that discussion, but if we want to bring a contract out, I can do that, too.
Be good.
But that, having the discussion about taking a look at it, we've got a lot of these committees that are forming around. If you're going to do anything countywide, the capabilities of this board, the funding potential of this board is an asset to every one of our community members, number one. Number two, I don't believe our community members understand that that asset exists. And number three, there are the ones that do understand it exists and have vocally submitted to many of us that they don't want anything to do with this, and I don't know why. And that is something that for over forty years has bothered me, and I'd like to see if there's ways that we either can mend those fences as we are currently organized, or if a different organization is necessary in order to try and get there, or having some other function between us and the municipalities to bring this together so that we can build that trust and bring those bridges back together. That's what I'm hammering after, and I think John's there, and I think Chairman Dersinsky supports it, and I'd like to just end this discussion right now and pick a date. You pick the dates, I'll do what I got to do, but the thirteenth is difficult for me.
November fifteenth?
I have it, this will be here, I'm sorry. I have priorities, all right? It's a holiday.
I'm fine the first week of December. I'm fine before Thanksgiving, I'm fine. I'm fine before Thanksgiving, I'm fine anytime during the last week in November.
Do it early in the summer.
May I ask what the, we have to draw on what the purpose, and state the purpose of what you want in this meeting, please? And we'll put it in the record and that's what should be sent to the United Force. What is the purpose?
I'll try and, I'll try and summarize it again, Mr. Chairman, I think we, we beat this one to death. The issue is, is to discuss the makeup of the existing county board, the possibilities of alternatives in, of the Public Works Board, and the possibilities of discussion with the local units that are being served by this board through some form of those services. And to just discuss the, you know, what it could look like, what it might look like, and see what the general consensus is. It's pretty, pretty clear. It's not to make a recommendation, I'm not looking for anything that would be a motion at that meeting, that's up to the board. But we don't pick us.
I'd like to see that expanded just a little bit, just from my own personal standpoint, that's, it would be a matter of trying to get their input as to how they would view their able, their ability to participate in the decisions that are ultimately made by the Department of Public Works Board. Whether it be through the advisory committee or something along those lines.
Would you two put a letter together stating the purpose to be approved?
I would, I would like to do even one step further with John, if John would work with me. If you're having trouble with an agenda, we will write it.
With the permission of the chairman?
I think Marv has some.
And we'll give it to Marv. If Marv didn't know what to put.
I don't want to hand it to him and say, this is it, here you go.
It's going to be a problem if you do, but go ahead. Because this is an issue that is not solved on this board. You may have a persuasion, you can do what you want, you can talk whatever you want. There's procedures, there's laws written on how to do this. And that's how we follow. So you want to have a meeting to discuss on the, give me a date. Give me a date.
Who are you going to invite?
That was the reason to get a consensus that we didn't get. So we, I will ask administrator, I will ask the chairman, and I will do what they suggest.
December fifth, the Wednesday. Pretty light for your zone committee meeting that day.
Okay. But I will ask, how we publicize it?
The wishers elect are out of town that day. The wishers elect are out of town that day at Calum's.
I, as far as...
The whole day, yep.
Well, that one goes in the evening.
December, December third, Monday.
I have no, whatever you guys decide, that's what it's going to be.
I'm fine with the third.
I'll make a motion to do it, Monday, December third. Discussion to, I'm not even trying to break, I'm trying to break, I've got them all back.
The second, December third.
Is there a time, one o'clock? Is that our normal, that's our normal time?
One thirty.
One thirty. Why not here? Because we're going to talk about it, let's...
Well, if we're going to have enough people, I mean, if we're going to send this out to gather information, you might want an area a little room, a little bigger than that. I was saying about the little Murray Conference Center or something.
I don't...
We'll take care of that, we'll take care of that. We'll find a place, we'll get it tomorrow morning.
We don't get that many, so be it, then you know, nobody cares. You better be prepared for it. So you don't have to cancel it because you don't have room for everybody.
Send it out tomorrow, we'll send an email out tomorrow with the location.
Any other old business?
Do we, do we need to hold on that date for a little bit, just a second? I'm fine, but there was a motion in a second.
Okay. All those in favor of having it the third at one thirty, had a place to be determined by the administrator?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, vote no. So we have enough of a little hole to make it happen. Is there any other old business? Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I promise you, I'm not going to cause anything controversial here.
Oppose it, bye.
Hang on just a second. There was, there was some considerable discussion on pollution at the last meeting, and I know that Commissioner Snyder was talking to a couple of people out there. I have had some recommendations from a couple of the commissioners that, as drain commissioner, I bring to the full board some of the changes that are going on, both at the federal level and at the state level regarding these pollution issues that folks are starting to aim at. There's a term in pollution elements called groundwater surface interfaces, that's called a GSI, and that's where the groundwater intercepts some type of stormwater conveyance system, either through the joints or through the sides of a ditch wall, that would be like a lot of my county drains. That GSI changes in there has basically said that the DEQ under Sections 201 and 203 no longer will be having any jurisdiction over the quality of water within those conveyance systems. This has been passed by the governor, signed by the governor, it's gone through the House and Senate. And in effect, the state now, through their groundwater, the groundwater people, look at the outlet to the state's waters. In other words, where does the city of Muskegon Storm Sewer go into the lake? Where does the county drain go into a stream? Where does that route and course stop? And they look only at the end of the pipe. If the end of the pipe does not meet the criteria under any type of timber or any type of groundwater controls or maximum daily loads, the violation notice goes to the owner of the system. This is why I've been fighting so hard with Marathon in Muskegon Township, because that is a groundwater surface interface between Barnes Drain and the Muskegon, the Marathon's plume. The way the laws are written right now, the violation notice that the state has on Marathon can go away. They are supposed to by law remove their violation notice and only watch the end of the pipe, which is someplace downstream of Sheridan Road. And if the NAPA issues and the gasoline problems start showing up in the water column at that time, the violation does not go to Marathon, it goes to the Muskegon County Drain Commissioner. And the liability with that pollution falls on three hundred and forty-two property owners in the Barnes Drain and not on the county of Muskegon and not on anything. That puts me in to a situation where I have to chase Marathon. Now, quite frankly, on that particular one, we're in pretty good shape right now because we just reached agreement and I'm signing agreements with Marathon right now. That puts them in the responsible party position. But if you have no principal responsible parties under a lot of the areas in Muskegon County and the city or what have you, for plumes that have existed for fifty years, that issue is a very, very disturbing issue that we're going to have to deal with. The federal government and the state is sending these responsibilities down, putting them on our local shoulders, and we're going to have to deal with these because it's, where are we going to find the funds to hire the attorneys and the engineers to go out there and battle big business? And if you don't have a big business that's there, if there's no principal response, a principal responsible party, no PRP, how do we go out and deal with this? That's something that I think needs to be brought to the full board just on an educational basis on where this is going and what we intend to do. And it's, it's one of the things that I have to deal with on a daily basis. So these folks' concerns are real. I suffer it at my house, my wife and I import all our water too, we got the same problems. Ours isn't a chemical issue, it's high irons, and I think that's across the county, but where you have actual groundwater pollution, those issues are falling on local shoulders, not so much on the, on the state and the feds anymore. Thank you, just a bit of information.
We have a new business? Any other motion to the room?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're late, my stomach, let's bring you back.